Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 12, 2025, meeting of the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission. This time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda are the minutes from last month. The approval of those meeting minutes. Would anyone like to entertain a motion to approve the April 14, 2025 minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Mary?
Second.
Bob, thank you. Any discussion, corrections on those? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes from April 14, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Let's go to our staff for some announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have a regularly scheduled DRC meeting, and it'll be next Monday, May 19, starting at 4:00 p.m. here at Eastern Flank Event Facility. And the deadline to submit for this meeting is midnight tonight. Tomorrow, May 13, at 7:00, a proclamation will be made by the mayor for Preservation Month, and we welcome everyone to attend this meeting and take a photograph after the mayor goes and does the Preservation Month proclamation. Additionally, at everyone's spot here for the commissioners, we have sent out our preservation mailer, postcards. And so, since May is Preservation Month, we have this mailer sent out to all of the property owners and tenants that are in the Historic Preservation Overlay. So, everyone got a mailer, and it has the information on it is that, you know, if you're considering any alterations to the exterior building, you would need a certificate of appropriateness, and also that we are updating our preservation plan. That's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Emily. All right, at this point, we have time set aside for citizen comments. This is open for citizens to be heard on any issue or concern. If you'd like to speak to a specific item on tonight's agenda, please wait until the citizen comment period for that specific item. For all other citizens, or excuse me, for those citizen comments, please see staff. They'll give you one of these cards to fill out and hand it in so that I can make sure and call you up for an item. Come to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Are there any citizens who wish to speak to the commission at this time on any other subject? No, I see none. Okay. Let's move on to our other agenda items. Item number two here is consideration of in-kind replacement of elements and roofing at 305 Public Square, the Williamson County Historic Courthouse. Emily has our staff presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the property at 305 Public Square is located within the downtown Franklin National Register Historic District, and it is also on the National Register of Historic Places. The courthouse is a two-story brick Greek Revival-style building with a stone foundation and gable metal roof. The proposal includes a series of in-kind repairs and work to preserve the building. The proposal came before the Design Review Committee in March 2025 to discuss the proposed alterations to the building. As proposed, the application meets the intent of the guidelines, and the work will further preserve the historic building for many years into the future. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the in-kind replacement and repair of elements with the following conditions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Jenna Lee, applicant. Is there an applicant here tonight? Have you seen anyone? No? Tell you what, let's, uh, let's hold on this item, and we may come back if they appear. So, if staff will let us know if they show up, we'll, we'll jump back in and put them in there. Let's go to item number three. Is that all right with everyone? Let's do consideration of alterations accessory structure at 234 Fourth Avenue North, and I think Elizabeth has a staff report for this one.
Thank you. So, the property located at 234 Fourth Avenue North is located in the downtown Franklin National Register Historic District and features a circa 1935 one-story veneered building with Tudor Revival influences. The site also features a circa 1970 concrete block accessory building that was deemed non-contributing in the 2018 National Register update. The proposal came before the April Design Review Committee, and feedback has been incorporated into the COA application. The proposal includes replacing a retrofitted French door with a garage door. The proposed garage door is a steel overhead door with a panel design and 16-light window pattern. The proposed garage door is seen elsewhere in the district and maintains a similar appearance to garage doors on nearby historic buildings along the street. The proposed garage door is appropriate in light of the guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the garage door with conditions. Thank you.
Remind us your name, Elizabeth.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Yes.
Do you have any other comments?
I, I don't have any other comments, other than what Emily described. So, yes, replacement with carriage house-style overhead door.
Perfect.
Yeah, sure.
Are there any citizens who wish to comment on this? All right, this time, I'll take the motion from all in pressure.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Second, second? All right, any discussion on this motion? I see that the approval is staff conditions. So, so it is. Are you okay with that, second? With staff conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Call those in favor of the motion for approval with staff conditions. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number four, consideration of site alterations driveway at 803 Fair Street. Elizabeth has our staff presentation for us today.
Thank you. The property located at 803 Fair Street is located in the Henchville National Register Historic District, and the site features a circa 1930 one-and-a-half-story Tudor Revival House and a circa 1930s front gable garage. The proposal includes replacing the existing asphalt driveway material. The driveway path will not be altered or expanded. The driveway material will be replaced with a chip-and-seal blend material and a concrete border. The proposed alteration is in keeping with the recommendation of the guidelines as this materials are consistent with those recommended and are materials seen in the district. Staff recommends approval of the driveway alteration with conditions. Thank you.
Samuel Woodson? Good evening.
Ladies and Mr. Chairman, in committee, just, this old driveway is really showing its age, and so, we'd like to do it in a pattern that's been approved before by the board over on Third and Fourth Avenue, using the same contractor.
Thank you very much. Any citizens here wish to comment on this either? Okay, none. All are taking the motion for approval of the commission?
Move for approval with staff conditions.
Second.
Paul, for second? Any discussion? No discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor of approval with staff conditions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's passed.
Let's try this. I'm sorry, I muted it when I opened my water bottle, and then I forgot. I apologize. For those that didn't hear, the last two motions passed. Okay. Thank you. Item number five, consideration of new construction principal structure at 115 Winslow Road, and Elizabeth has our staff presentation.
Thank you. So, the property located at 115 Winslow Road is a vacant lot in the Franklin Road Historic District. A one-and-a-half-story principal structure with an attached garage in the neoclassical French Revival style is proposed. Feedback from the April Design Review Committee meeting has been incorporated into this application. This item was most recently deferred during the April Historic Zoning Commission meeting. The placement, orientation, form, size, height, foundation, roof, gutters and downspouts, site and setting, and fencing are all unchanged from previous applications and are appropriate. A partial width front porch is proposed at the front of the building. The porch is nine feet deep and will be 13 feet 6 inches wide. The porch will feature sets of simple double columns, which are proposed to be approximately 12 inches in diameter. The materials of the columns are not known, but should be consistent with the guidelines. The proposed building will be clad in lap siding, and the lap siding will have over four-and-a-half-inch reveal and is proposed to be in a neutral color that is in keeping with the traditional colors of the neoclassical building. The specifications for the material of the siding were not included in the application, but should be consistent with the guidelines. The proposed materials and exterior finishes are consistent with the recommendations of the guidelines. A three-quarters light door is proposed for the front entrance with flanking panels and side lights. The front entrance is approximately eight feet tall, and the design of the doors is appropriate, and feedback has been incorporated into the design and scale of the front entrance and is now more compatible with those seen on the historic buildings down the street. The materials are not specified, but should be consistent with the guidelines. A variety of window patterns are seen on the building, and a casing is proposed around windows where lap siding is utilized. The window is proposed to be a Sierra Pacific Aluminum Cloud Window with a white finish, and it has a double-hung appearance. The proposed windows appear to be appropriate. While a surround is proposed for the windows on the building, the surround should be raised. Shutters are proposed on the front of the building, and the use of shutters is appropriate to the proposed architectural style. The material and size specifications must be consistent with the guidelines. For the front, three gable dormers are proposed on the front of the building, and the dormers on the front facade will have a pitch of nine over 12. The recessed dormers on the garage will have a pitch of one over 12, and feedback from the Design Review Committee meeting has been incorporated to the size of the dormers on the garage to be reduced to assist in the massing of this portion of the building. The pitch of the dormers on the garage does not meet the recommended minimum pitch for dormers. However, the rear and less visible facades may offer additional flexibility. A stone chimney is proposed at the right front corner of the building, and a smaller chimney of the same design is proposed at the rear of the building by the covered porch. The proposed chimney appears to be compatible with existing chimneys on nearby neighboring historic buildings. The material of the chimney cap is not specified at this time. Mechanical equipment is proposed to be located along the right elevation, and landscaping is proposed to screen the equipment. The mechanical equipment must be screened from street view with landscaping, fencing, or walls. So, staff recommends approval of the new construction with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Katsidis?
Good evening. Hello there, Michael Katsidis, MK Studio. I would designate this as a Greek Revival rather than a French. I think you called it French, but anyway, it doesn't matter. I think the original submitted was French. Maybe that's why. Wood columns, doric, doric caps, attic bases. The window casing, exterior window casing is five-quarter by six, so it, it would extend up in front of the siding. What other questions? Oh, chimney caps. It hasn't been determined yet. It's either gonna be a clay pot or a decorative spark arrestor up there chimney, chimney hood. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. If you have a seat. I do have one citizen comment card. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, let us know by card, but at this time, we'll call up Ms. Stacy Ligon.
Hi there. Since we got up and voiced negative thoughts, we also wanted to get up and say the... ...with this project. We especially appreciate the video that was presented, gave a great perspective on proportion, and really welcome it for other projects. We, we believe this has evolved to something that is a really good fit for the street, and appreciate all the effort from this commission, and again, Doug and Mike, to get it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, let's go to the commission for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to approve with staff conditions.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Brian and Michael? All right. Who wants to kick us off with some discussion?
I will.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I think it has. It has come miles, and I, I think it's very successful. I do believe that the chimney, um, the proportions and the placement of it, to me, look like your eye is going to run to it. That's the way I describe when, when there's something that looks like it's not gonna fit into the scale and context. That's the way I express it. I, I've, I, I just think that the chimney on the front needs some work, the way it interfaces with the house.
Okay.
And the scale. And I would think on this size ha, this style house, it would be brick. So, those are my comments.
Okay.
And to add to that, that was kind of a glaring addition for me, too, because, you know, in our last DRC, the chimney was not presented with the DRC. So, this is new that we're, we're seeing this. And it does seem to me in an, in a non-traditional placement for a chimney of that size. Although, I'd say its form, you know, the form of it, like it was said earlier, is, is traditional. It's just its placement. So, I'd like to hear more feedback from the commission.
Sure. Who else?
Uh, just, I, the chimney was gonna be my first point, which is, I know staff's analysis said that it's compatible. Does that mean the height is compatible with existing homes in the area?
It appeared the height and width was compatible. Winslow Road has a lot of front-facing wide chimneys on a variety of styles of houses, so it did appear to be compatible with this.
Okay. That, that answers my one concern, and that's all I need to say.
Okay. Did you have something? Holly?
I think I'm sharing with you. Yeah, I think the, the chimney with the wider part before it gets to the narrower part, it should be contained like on the house, the, and have just the narrower part sticking up. So, to, to me, the house looks, like, it looks really, really good, and I think it's really, really successful. I think the chimney just needs to be reworked a little bit.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything else?
Is the one next door the same way, or is that just part of the rendering? There was a picture on one of them that showed the chimney on the house to the right, and it seemed like it was similar right out in front, kind of a focal point.
And to that point, I would say you're looking at more of a Tudor Revival and more of a, a classic revival, classical revival, or colonial revival.
Colonial revival.
And, you know, you, you see a lot of front-facing chimneys on Tudors, but not so much on the colonial revival.
And I, I, Mr. Chair, I think that's what's going to make this look odd in the context of that neighborhood.
Yeah.
The shape, the, I think the chimney, I like the chimney.
Oh, yeah.
I think it is the proximity to the front of the house that makes it problematic.
Yeah.
That, I think that doesn't help, that the chimney rides out on the, the front elevation, and then I also think the material. I, I tried to find a stone chimney on a, what I would call a colonial revival.
Yeah, when I was reviewing the, the packet, it, it was a bit of an odd placement for this style house. And there are a lot of front-facing chimneys
Yes.
in the neighborhood, but they are definitely different styles than this. Typically, this style of house, you know, it, it, those fireplaces were centered up in some room inside, and this style of house is usually a single room deep or two rooms deep, and the fireplace was centered in one of those rooms. And right now, it doesn't seem like maybe it goes stylistically with the house. And then, you know, Holly brought up the idea of where the, the chimney tapers. Typically, that happens when it pokes through the roof, or, or before it pokes through the roof, but it's tough because the roof's really low in that spot because it's so close to the front. So, there's a couple things that are, you know, playing with the, the scale and proportion of it that, that aren't, aren't playing nice in terms of its placement. Yeah, I think, I, I kind of agree that it, we would have seen brick, but, you know, if this were like an internal chimney and just poked through the roof, it's like, okay, what would that maybe look like? Could it be stone? Again, that style probably would have been brick. And then, I think the height, you know, there's gonna be some code requirements. I think Jared could probably talk to that. It's within 10 feet. It's gotta be two feet higher. Is that?
That's right.
Yeah, so, that's probably set by that, and we'd probably want you to, want them to stick to whatever that code is. Probably not a whole lot bigger, not a lot smaller. So, there's, but part of it is, it slid so far forward, there's a lot of air between the chimney and the ridge, which is one of those things that's playing, making it just look really tall, too. Even though it's, if it were back at the ridge, it looked
It would look fine.
So, so, yeah, I have, I'm very supportive of everything except the chimney. I think it's in a place right now that I just, I, I can't support it like it is because I'm afraid that that one little element will dominate the front of this house.
Well, since, since DRC, it was not in our, in our Design Review Committee packet. And what was in the packet, I mean, we were all, I think, you know, very pro for, what if we offer up an amendment to just remove the chimney from the front corner?
Yeah. I think we, I think the committee had asked for a chimney. Is that what, we, we had said that a house like this would have had a chimney of some sort, I think, is what the comment was. But, yes, I...
And the reason I say that is that, you know, this is like the fourth time
Yes.
we would defer it, and I would like to see us move on.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And I, I would be okay if somehow the chimney moved back.
Well, traditionally, where you see the window and the gable, it's in the centers where you would see the chimney. And then, the more slender part of the chimney would, would, would extend above the roofline.
Right.
But, if you look at the floor plan, it doesn't work.
No, that's...
Yeah.
They, they would have to change the floor plan, that's what I'm saying.
I, I would, versus this chimney, Mr. Chair, I would be okay with no chimney. I think it would be, I think that chimneys are typical on these houses. I think this house is a very scale, style fit for this neighborhood, totally. It's just the chimney, so I don't...
No, I agree. That's, that's kind of the way I feel about it, and I'm, I'm indifferent to the chimney. I think chimney, chimney in the right spot would make it look even better, but I don't think it looks bad without it. I just think a historic version of this house would have had some chimney. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm open to amendments, if we wanna just...
I would like to make an amendment, Mr. Chair,
Okay.
that the, that the front corner chimney be removed.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on removing the chimney?
Well, and I, I would say if the applicant wants to come back for that one thing, they can.
Come back and show a chimney
Yeah, they'd have the direction
Application.
on the rest of it. The other amendment that I would like to offer is that the windows come to staff for approval, because I think we're trying to...
We'll have to do that amendment after this one.
After this one, okay.
But save it. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, unless there's an amendment to removing the chimney from the front corner, we have to stick on that for just a minute. Any other discussion on removing the front chimney?
So, we're talking about removing, not relocating the chimney?
Yes, with the understanding that the applicant could put in an application just for a chimney later, when they find a better place for it. They could come to DRC for that, with just chimney. But they would have an approval to build it with no chimney at that point as well.
And so, I, in my mind, that would give the applicant who's been going through this process, it would give them direction on, we know where we're going. But, except for
Right.
one element.
Right. Ready to vote on the amendment? All right, so the amendment is to remove the chimney from the front corner of the house. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So, that amendment passes. Now, our main motion reads approval with staff conditions and remove the front, or remove the chimney from the front corner.
Well, I wanted to offer another.
Okay.
I guess it would have to be an amendment unless it's already in the application, and I haven't read that, you know?
Is it, windows come back?
Do windows come back to staff?
Uh, that is typically a condition of approval, but they included the, the make of the window, the Sierra Pacific Aluminum Cloud.
Have you all reviewed that?
I do believe, we have seen that window profile before.
Does it have enough dimension to it?
Um, we would welcome that amendment.
Okay. So, I just would say for the window to come back to staff for approval.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment that the window approval come back to staff? No? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of the amendment to, excuse me, the amendment that the windows will come back to staff for approval, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. So, now, our main motion reads approval with staff conditions and the chimney from the front corner be removed, and windows shall come back to staff for final approval. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, let's vote on that. All those in favor of that, that I just read, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, the motion is passed, and if you wanna bring a chimney back, feel free. If not, you don't have to.
And, Mr. Chair, it, it was an amazing application, I just wanna say.
Thank you. Long, long time coming, so thank you so much. And thank you all. We've looked at that many times. Okay. Let's go to item number six. Consideration of site alterations, fencing and principal building alterations at 228 Franklin Road, and Emily has our staff report for us.
Uh, I'm gonna step out on this one.
Okay. Okay.
I guess, is this the one? No, not this one, excuse me. No, the other one on Franklin, another one.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Emily.
Okay, the property at 228 Franklin Road is located within the Franklin Road Local Historic District and is on the National Register for Historic Places. The building is a two-story frame Greek Revival influenced residence constructed circa 1846. The proposal recently came before the April Design Review Committee meeting, and guidance was incorporated into this application. The application has a series of work that is proposed. The first, reinstalling a front walkway and steps from the sidewalk of Franklin Road to the building, replacing the existing concrete front steps with limestone steps, installing stone columns at the street and stone columns with a vehicular gate, constructing a ramp at the rear of the building, installing a sports court and lighting at the rear of the property, additional hardscape will be installed at the rear of the building, and installation of a four-board horse fencing. The guidelines recommend a max height of the four-board horse fencing at four and a half feet, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the application with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Have Mr. Yates Bateman?
Good evening. Anything to add, sir?
Nothing to add. We appreciate y'all's time and agree with all the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you very much. If you'll grab a seat. Are there any citizens who want to comment on this particular item? Okay, see none? Okay, let's go to the commission for a motion.
For approval with staff conditions.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Michael and Bob, thank you very much. Any discussion?
The only discussion I would offer is that, you know, this is the Truitt, Truitt House. It was the first nursery in Franklin for landscaping, and I think this is a great traditional look for this house. I mean, I think the architect has done a tremendous job.
Great. Anybody else? All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor of approval with staff conditions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you very much. We're on a roll. That's good. Okay, item number seven. Did our, did our item number one ever appear? Or, excuse me, two? Sure. Did they ever appear? Don't know. We'll come back to it. Item number seven, consideration of alterations, window replacement at 438 Main Street. And that's Elizabeth with our staff report.
Thank you. The property located at 438 Main Street is located in the downtown Franklin National Register Historic District. This building is part of Five Points Place, a 1923 two-story commercial building clad in glazed brick. The proposal includes the replacement of 16 windows on the second floor of the building. The existing windows are one-over-one wood sash windows and utilize a storm window. The proposed replacement window includes 13 single-hung full wood windows and three semi-lighted hung wood windows. The existing condition of a number of the windows has been submitted for review. Based on the images provided of the windows, the interior trim and window stool on the interior of the building appear to be deteriorated and may be in need of repair. The applicant has noted that the windows are leaking. The windows on the rear of the building are historic wood windows that maintain segments of wavy glass. The windows on the front of the building, which are proposed to be replaced, do not have wavy glass. Additional surrounding, additionally, surrounding the glass within the wood frame of the windows, which are proposed to be replaced, there is an aluminum trim piece that is not seen on the historic windows on the rear of the building. The guidelines recommend the following, to preserve and maintain historic windows and historic window openings. And based on the images provided, the windows do not appear to be in a state of disrepair for which replacement would be recommended. The existing conditions demonstrate a need to replace the interior trim work and window stools on the interior of the building, which does not require Historic Zoning Commission's review or approval as it is an interior repair. Additional treatment on the exterior may be needed to prevent the windows from leaking from the exterior. However, additional information is needed to further understand the condition of the windows and if other repair alternatives are available rather than replacement. A definitive age for the windows is not known, and as the guidelines recommend preserving and maintaining historic windows, the application does not meet the recommendations of the guidelines. Staff recommends denial of the window replacement based on the following grounds, to preserve and maintain historic windows and historic window openings. If the Historic Zoning Commission votes to approve the application, there are recommended conditions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It's Victoria Baluk.
Yes.
Is that how you say it?
Yes, Baluk.
Baluk?
Yes.
Oh, I was close.
So, I'm a representative from Pella Windows, and we went on site to take a look at the existing windows. At this point, so, windows are leaking, and it's a lot of rotten wood there, so at this point, there is no repair that we can provide. And we're offering the Pella Reserve Traditional Window, which is the replica of the historic window. It's going to be same type of brick mold, and we will get, our team will get back to the existing masonry opening, we'll prepare the opening, we will install the new window, the, like, the brick mold that will look same as original, and we will do the whole work from the outside and the inside. I think this is the best that we can do. I'm not sure that window can be repaired, and like, from Pella Company, we can't provide any help with repairing this window.
Okay. Anything else you all want to add?
Yes.
Anything?
Karen just asked me to speak for a moment because I've worked with her, been a wonderful...
And she's the property manager.
Yes.
Tell us, tell us your name.
My name is Julie Davis.
Okay, thank you.
And I've worked with Karen for 25 years now, been a joy to do so. I have been trying to do the research back on 84, 1984, 1985, when the applications were put for this property beyond the Historic Registry. It was kind of ambiguous about some of the things about those front windows, and we're talking about the second-story windows that wrap around. This has kind of been a process, and this is the final step. We had water damage, trying to figure out where it's coming from. First was a full roof replacement, then we went in, did the parapet wall, next was the huge masonry preservation project that was completed last year. I think it looks fantastic. We were able to work with a grant. It was, it worked out so well. The windows, I think Karen's intent is to try to put windows in that were historic, and also to be able to make sure that, that, I think her desire is to take the storm windows down, which would bring them back to more of a historic look on that. And the reason why these windows were selected, the front of the building, as per the application even says, some of the doorways were replaced at that time, some of the other windows, but that side of the building, especially around because of the defect with the, with the brick, received a lot more damage. So, when the pictures, when you're looking at the pictures, I told her I could do a video, but you can pretty much put your finger right through. And we've already, I've been on site over the years, trying to replace sections of them at a time, putting a Band-Aid on it so that it would be, look better for the, for the tenants. But we're looking for a real solution so that, I think Karen wants this building to just be around for generations to a joy, and she's very dedicated to it.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, if y'all have a seat, please.
I just wanted, I'm Karen Cochran, just wanted to add that when we embarked on the mortar project on the, for the front, right there, the front of the building, and replacing the glazed brick, the enormous amount of glazed brick that had chipped and broken, it really worked far better than I even anticipated. It was just, really did well. But one of the things we discovered, and I'm so glad we redid all of the mortar in the front of the building, was that the amount of leaking that had come through that old mortar over the years was profound, and it had really affected the windows a great deal. And we, in working with that second-floor window, we're going to have to take the awnings down and use a lift, so to speak. And that's going to be an issue, too, to figure out, of course, how we'll do that. But honestly, I was so pleased with the way the glazed brick and the mortar, the re-mortaring of that building worked out. But one of the big surprises was, hey, we got a lot more water damage in here than, in these second-floor windows than we really anticipated. So that's, then, project number two is getting these, these windows replaced. The back windows are fine. In 85, when the building was restored and put on the National Register, the, it did have storm windows that were put on over the windows. And I would love to be able to take those off, because they were not in the original windows, but we put them on there to protect and to also to have more of a solution for heating and air. But I think you can see the condition of, of the window sills. And that is, a great deal of it is on the inside, but much of it is also on the outside. It's been patched and patched and patched. But we need new windows, so, and the styles of the window would be exactly the same as the original windows were. And the mold, the brick molding would be exactly the same. And part of the reason we chose Pella to do the work is they have people that will be able to do all of the, the brick mold, all of that, on the, on the exterior that needs to be done to match to the old, and that is, I couldn't find, I talked to so many people about those windows, I couldn't find anybody that could just do that little, repair a little rail. Maybe you all know people that can do it, but I, I couldn't find anybody. So, anyway, what we'd like to do is take the storm windows off, put new windows that look exactly like that, and that's what we wanted, and then change all the, the brick molding and the inside and the out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any citizens here who wish to comment? Okay, hearing done, let's, let's take a motion from the commission. You can grab a seat, ma'am. Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion to defer, and I'll explain why. I don't think we have enough information about the condition of the exterior. We have a lot of pictures of the interior and conditions there, but we don't have enough showing us the condition of the, of the exterior part. And I, I feel that that's necessary in order to, to make a, the right call on this one.
Okay. Is there a second from anyone? No second? Okay, then that motion for deferral dies due to lack of seconds. Let's get another motion on the floor, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny with staff comments.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Yes, ma'am, there's a motion on the floor for denial in accordance with staff's recommendation, but we haven't yet received a second from anyone. Okay? That motion dies due to lack of second? Any other motions anyone like to make?
I'll, I'll make the motion to deny. A second, it.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Brian?
It is.
Okay. So Brian and Mary have a motion and a second to deny. Any discussion here?
Yeah, I would like to discuss a little bit, especially, I mean, this is a great building. This is the old Dr. Samuel White Building, and the applicant has done a fantastic job in restoring the brick. And I know the intention is to do what's right for this building. I mean, I know that. But I'd like to encourage, first of all, our guidelines say that we should repair historic windows and not replace them. And when I look at the pictures, what I'm seeing that is deteriorated is the trim and the stool of the window, not the sashes themselves. And it looks to me like what's happening is that moisture is migrating through the brick or through some cracks from the exterior, and it's actually affecting that, that trim piece behind, that sits right on the brick. And I think that's the problem that probably needs to be investigated. And I would also, you know, suggest seeking help from the Tennessee Historical Commission, because I know that, that Tennessee Historical Commission also helped, I think, some with grants for the, for the restoration of the building, and I think they could give some great guidance and maybe even some people that could do the repairs in a sensitive historic manner. So, I mean, that's, that's what I would, I would recommend to the applicant.
Well, I, I second, second because I feel like it deserves that discussion to see if there is some other way of this, and I don't really know what the age of those windows are that are there that would matter to me. I'm delighted they're being saved on the back, have a feeling there's more weather exposure on the front and trying to get to those. I'm sympathetic, but I would like to see, this is one of the stars on Main Street, it's on a corner, you see it more, so I would like to see what do they actually look at like on the exterior as well, and pursue, have the applicant look into, can they be repaired, and then really understand the window that's going back.
Okay.
Didn't we just have an applicant walk back with the church with the same issue, and they found somebody that could repair
They did.
similar window?
Mm-hmm.
So, so we know those people exist.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who is that that they found?
We'll have to let staff get with you after, I'm not sure what, even what the names are, to be honest with you.
Well, we don't have a vote yet, so...
Yeah, we haven't voted yet. Yeah, I'm looking at the images and, and, I'm not sure when insulated glass units came into, into the universe, but the fronts are definitely, have that aluminum spacer, there's probably a picture here if they'll scroll down, it's under that existing, existing
Well, they've got storm windows.
Well, it's got an aluminum spacer in the glass. Right there's the picture of it. And so, that's a more modern construct than those back windows, which look like they're real divided.
Are you, are you sure you're not looking at the stone, I mean, at the storm windows?
On the left-hand side, that's, that's a glass spacer.
Okay.
And that's my assessment of that, too. That's insulated glass.
Doesn't mean it's not old.
But it doesn't mean, doesn't, you know, there, there were a lot of retrofits with insulated glass in the rebates. They had to increase the rebate in order to get the glass to fit, and that, that may be what that is. It looks that way to me.
Yes, another glass probably isn't original, but it still doesn't tell us a whole lot about the whole window, and just, you know, our guidelines are pretty straightforward that they need to be repaired as opposed to replaced. So, I tend to agree with the motion that needs to, needs to be repaired. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to deny in accordance with staff's recommendations. Let's vote on that. All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. So that application is denied, and hopefully staff will get back with you and maybe give you some, some resources there and with a follow-up email.
And, and I would encourage them to come to Design Review.
Yeah, we could talk a lot more freely at Design Review when we're not at a voting meeting, so we'd definitely invite you back to that. Okay. All right. Item number eight, consideration of new construction, parking structure at 230 Franklin Road, the factory. Emily Huffer has our staff report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the development plan for the factory's proposed new buildings So, the development plan for the factory's proposed new buildings received a favorable Preliminary Historic Zoning Commission recommendation of January 2025. And the development plan and rezoning was approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman in April 2025. The next step in the process is to obtain a certificate of appropriateness, followed by site plan approval by the Planning Commission. The proposal was before the Design Review Committee in January, February, March, and April of this year in preparation for the formal COA review. This part of the proposal includes the construction of a new parking structure between the existing buildings, numbered three and five, on the factory's campus. This new building will face the Harpeth Industrial Court buildings. The development is proposed at 230 Franklin Road at the factory at Franklin. The factory campus is located in the Franklin Road Local Historic District, and the site is also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Within this application, the new parking structure is proposed. For the placement orientation.
Ms. Huffer, should we be seeing something here? Thank you.
My apologies.
No problem.
So the new parking structure is proposed to be between the existing buildings, three and five, on the factory campus. These buildings will face the Harpeth Industrial Court. The National Register lists buildings three and five as contributing buildings to the factory site. The new parking structure will be tucked in behind the existing buildings on the site and is appropriately placed per the guidelines. For the building form, the form of the surrounding buildings historically served the site as industrial buildings. Therefore, the building forms are not ornate, and they are simply designed in order to provide a space for the work that was needed at the time of their construction. The building form of the proposed structure is generally consistent with the surrounding buildings. The guidelines recommend aligning architectural features of the new building with the existing buildings. The size of the window and door openings, floor-to-ceiling heights, cornice alignment, and the foundations of new building have not been provided within the application to understand if the proposed building aligns with the existing surrounding buildings. Additionally, it is a zoning ordinance requirement for new commercial mixed-use building to vertically orient materials, designs, elements, and architectural details to emphasize the proportion of height to width. As proposed, the horizontal banding across the entire building emphasizes the building's horizontal appearance. For the building height, the height of the building varies from 38 feet 6 inches on the main parts of the building to 47 feet at the tallest on one of the, on one of the stair towers. The Preliminary Historic Zoning Commission recommendation noted that the average height of the buildings on the factory campus is 39 feet and a half inch in height. And 10% above the average height is 42 feet 11 inches. The submitted plans are noted to have a maximum height of 44 feet 2 inches, which is different from the preliminary recommendation. Most of the building is underneath the guidelines recommendation for height, except for the stair towers, which will be 47 feet and 30, 43 feet 8 inches. For the materials and exterior finishes, within the application, there are two options proposed for the main material of the building. Both, both options will be composed of a brick in the color English pub. However, the option lies in choosing between a traditional brick and a thin-set brick panel with a series of concrete banding. The application indicates that if the traditional brick is utilized, then the concrete banding is not attainable. Feedback from several DRC meetings supported the use of traditional brick over the brick panels. For the traditional brick option, only one elevation is provided, and additional information is needed for the other three sides of the building if banding was not utilized. There is a note that for the traditional brick option, the banding will be replaced with solder and stacked brick. Additionally, there are two options for the metal paneling at the top of the building. The zoning ordinance regulates that accent materials can have up to 25% of each facade. These materials should be architectural metals, authentic stucco, or scored precast concrete. The zoning ordinance further prohibits corrugated metal for commercial mixed-use buildings. The use of traditional brick meets the guidelines recommendation as that is what is seen on the factory campus. It is noted that the mortar color and mortar joint will be similar to building two. The provided materials of the silver corrugated metal is appropriate on roofs of buildings as that is what is currently there and what could have been there previously. However, the utilization of a roofing material as a material on the side of a building does not meet the intent of the guidelines. A sample of these materials have not been provided to staff to determine if these materials would meet the requirements of the guidelines and of the zoning ordinance. More information is needed to understand what the building will look like if the banding is not utilized. As for the roofs, the roof of the parking structure will be utilized as a parking floor. Several of the surrounding buildings do utilize a flat roof. The parapets of the parking structure will mostly screen smaller vehicles from the view shed of Franklin Road. For the details and ornamentation, the details of the cement banding and the use of brick on the proposed new building are similar to what is seen on the adjacent building, too. The application notes that the proposed building will have an 18-inch wide horizontal banding and a 12-inch wide vertical banding. Information has not been included on the measurements of the width of the banding on building two or if there are other buildings that utilize banding. The amount and design of the heavy horizontal banding along the length of the building emphasizes the horizontal when coupled with the rest of the architectural details. As such, it does not meet the zoning ordinance requirement for particular, for, for vertical articulation. There is a note for an option that uses the traditional brick option that the banding will be replaced with solder and stacked brick and not to use concrete banding. For the thin-set brick panel, the cement banding is utilized. Renderings have not been provided to show how the building would appear with the use of bricks in the space of concrete banding. Additionally, there are two options for the metal paneling at the top of the building. The design of the first option with thin-set brick does not meet the zoning ordinance requirements for vertical articulation. Additional information is needed to determine if the second option of the traditional brick meets the guidelines and zoning ordinance. For the signs, there are proposed signs that are noted on the entrance to the parking structure, but additional information is needed to review and approve the proposed signs. For the entrances and windows, on the lowest level of the garage, architectural metal frames will be in the window spaces. This was a suggestion during a DRC meeting, meeting to better blend the new construction with the existing buildings by utilizing metal framing members that appear as window frames. Information on the window sizes was not included within the application to fully understand if the window openings are compatible with the surrounding openings. While the windows are vertically proportioned, more detailed information is needed for the architectural metal window frames and the sizing of the window openings. For the connector piece and alterations. In order to comply with the fire department's requirements, the new building must be attached to the historic building. It is proposed that a six-inch expansion joint will connect buildings three and five with the finished building. With a finished black metal flashing and framing will be attached to the new building. Additionally, several of the rear doors are proposed to be replaced with fire-rated doors. For the lighting aspect, scroll to that for us. Here we go. Renderings show existing lighting that is seen on existing building, on the existing building 11 entry. However, the lighting that was discussed was the lighting that will be on the top of the garage and its visibility and light pollution that could be seen from Franklin Road at previous DRC meetings. The proposed lights are appropriate to the site, but the entire lighting plan should be provided to understand if it meets the guidelines. Therefore, staff recommends deferral of the application based on the lack of information on the following items. Three elevations for the second option with the traditional brick. Aligning the architectural features of the new building with those of nearby historic buildings, including floor-to-ceiling heights, cornice alignment, door and window heights, and foundations. Reinforce the appearance and rhythm of historic vertical divisions to maintain consistent facade widths. Use brick or masonry, masonry materials that are compatible in size, profile, and detailing with historic materials. Use decorative details in a manner that is compatible to those on nearby historic buildings while avoiding direct replication. Design new windows to be compatible with the size, placement rhythm, and relationship of solid to void on those of nearby historic building, buildings. And maintain vertically proportioned windows with traditional spacing patterns and alignment created by the upper-story windows of nearby historic buildings. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Emily. Have Benton?
Yeah.
Come on up, please. Thank you.
Yeah, Benton's mother's representing the applicant. A few points of clarification. The height clarification, there is no change in proposed height with the buildings. It was a clarification where we were measuring both elevation from sea level and FFE of the buildings and we, based on our survey. And that did change the maximum height, but we're not, we're still staying under the sea level, but it actually has no change in the heights of the buildings anyway. It's really a clarification. So there's, again, no change in heights from what we've been going through with DRC. Some of the sample clarifications, so DRC saw brick, and we've obviously gone through that. The metal panels are, as proposed, are metal panels that are on-site now that have been installed on facades. They've been approved in a COA for building two. And I, we didn't understand the need for bringing in samples because they're in, in situ, installed and have been approved by this body in the past for facade elements. The, the deferral with the conditions, it's, it's asking for additional clarifications on items that we're frankly confused by. We've provided a lot of that information. The, the banding was requested by, that was, that came out of the DRC process, which had, obviously, we had been doing over the past four months. The idea was to make it look more like a warehouse, and we were taking elements from B2, building two, that was favored by the DRC. And so we matched up the, the widths of those bands accordingly. And have obviously been talking with staff throughout. And at the last DRC, it was mentioned about the vertical articulation, and it was suggested by staff to more closely match building two, which is in moving the horizontal bands to the head, heads of the windows, for example. But obviously, if you look at building two, it's horizontally articulated. And that's obviously what the body wants, too. So we're meeting site conditions. The bands are actually probably thicker in the horizontal perspective of building two. Be that as it may, I mean, we've talked with staff this week about it. We believe that the bands could be shifted a little bit without changing the general design as DRC likes them and having them. But the horizontal bands could go to 12 inches, and the vertical bands could go to 18 inches, for example. Solves the vertical articulation, doesn't change the overall concept. The, the brick elevation you see there on the lower, the lower elevation, that was where we started. And obviously, is, is, you know, it changed into the bands as part of the DRC process, going back of, you know, it's just essentially going back to what the original design was, which is fine, too. We did create those bands, those bands with solder course. But, and then I want to do, just as Emily stated, we are requesting approval for both conventional and thin brick. And I'll, I'll let, I'll let Gina go into the, the details a little bit more on the virtues of thin brick. But obviously, safety, cleanliness, and durability are key factors in the thin brick. We're building right around and, and connecting to existing historic buildings in an operating site. It's a tight site. It's much safer to do it with thin brick. And the, what you can do with thin brick is pretty impressive now. And it is brick. We're talking about means and methods of construction, not the material itself. So it does meet the zoning ordinance, and it does meet the guidelines. But instead of a deferral, we believe that it's, it's appropriate to approve with conditions. And a few conditions that I would suggest are final material samples could be approved with staff, as we've been doing with the factory for three years. So that's brick, mortar color, for example. Final metal color on matching the roof with the parapet, for example. Size of the banding, meeting the general, if, if the body would like the banding, meet the general guidelines of what you're seeing here, but tweak them marginally to meet the zoning ordinance for vertical articulation. And the, the lights on the top level, so they're not shown because they're not, they're not existing. So we don't have pole lights, for example. That was feedback from the DRC. So the plan is to meet the photometric requirements that we need with keeping the lights at the parapet level and below. So you're only seeing the lights that were, that are going to be visibly exposed. But that can be a condition of approval, that there are no lights higher than the parapet level. And the, the window frames, you know, they're designed just like we've designed every other window frame on-site to meet the, the pane sizing. But, you know, we can, that can be a condition of approval that they substantially match that pane sizing as we've done on-site. And we can provide shop drawings for staff review. Gina, can you go in? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Gina Emanuel, Centric Architecture. And as Benton said, we started out with that second option you see on the screen, the more conventional brick. And after some of the discussions about making it look more like building two, we liked the direction that was heading as well, and that's why you have option one. We didn't start out with the thin brick, and honestly, because we did not like it. We weren't sure that that would be a good choice for the same reasons that you all have expressed. But we had many, many meetings with the garage manufacturer. They sent us to projects all over town in Franklin to see that they had done, that they had produced. They gave us examples that they'd done in historic districts elsewhere. And we were really pretty impressed with what they showed in a way that made us rethink this whole scenario. One of the things, as you can see on this drawing, purple versus the red, you don't see as many joints. So it is the same brick. So it's the same brick. We gave them a brick, and it would either be the thicker brick or the brick that they would cut shorter to put into their panel. So that's not different. A lot of the older examples used to be like Ephesus or something else. It's not what this is. It's the actual brick. And what was nice about it is the joints wouldn't be as regular across that. And one of the things we saw in the more conventionally-done garages with the brick as we were proposing in the first one is those joints, you will see them pretty regularly, and they, they don't look as refined over time. If you see a garage five to 10 years down the road, they just don't hold up as well. And what we liked about the option at the top was that all of those joints would be hidden on the concrete banding. So they were able to get a little bit wider because the brick was thinner. And so all of the joints then kind of follow the banding all the way around. And so we thought that just added a nice aesthetic touch to it. So there's just a little bit more information on how we, how we ended up there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one citizen comment card from Mr. James Blair. Okay. Oh, yeah, it says item nine. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Any other citizens wish to comment on this particular item, eight? Okay. Entertain a motion from the commission, please.
I would make a motion to defer with staff comments.
Okay. Is there a second?
I guess I could tell why. And, but yeah, to the next.
Next voting meeting.
Meeting. And the reason is, one of the reasons, if it doesn't comply with the city ordinance, I, I'm not sure what that's going to look like. My other reason, as the applicant is rethinking having the banding, I drove around the existing parking garages, and the banding gets so dirty and makes the building, over time, look like it's not maintained, even though it is. I mean, there are just not people going to be up, or there haven't been people up, power washing the exterior of parking garages. Another goal we had was for. Another goal we had was for cars to not show from Franklin Road, and I think I heard small cars won't show from Franklin Road. So I had felt that was one of the goals of this project, so those would be my reasons to do with detailing and where it doesn't comply with city standards and the cars.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion to defer?
Second.
Okay, Brian? Any other discussion, just based purely on the deferral? Okay, let's vote on the deferral. So the motion is to defer based on staff comments to the next voting meeting. Do we have a date certain for that?
It's June ninth.
June ninth.
Sorry, can I, can I ask a question before we vote to defer?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we defer, are we asking to see more of the version without the bands? Is that right?
That's up to the applicant. Yeah. They can present whatever information.
Included in staff comments. I think that I made a, a reason that was not included in staff comments, and that was the visibility of cars.
Okay. Anything else before we vote on the deferral? Okay, all those in favor of deferral based on staff comments to the next voting meeting on June ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. The ayes have it, so that particular item is deferred to that June ninth meeting. I would encourage you all to come and have a bit more discussion on that one. I think it's come a long way, and we, we were happy with the direction it's heading, but it's not, we weren't quite ready to take it up. I think we want a little more info, so, thank you. All right. Item number nine, consideration of partial demolition of Buildings Nine and Ten, new construction hotel, and construction of refuse locations at 2:30 Franklin Road, the factory, and Emily has staff report for this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this part of the proposal includes demolition of the Farmers Market Pavilion, demolition of Building Nine, partial demolition of Building Ten, construction of new refuse locations, and the construction of a new hotel building. These alterations will mostly be situated to the east of the existing buildings and will face Liberty Pike. So going to the Farmers Market Pavilion first, let me get a scroll so we can view it. Okay. So the Farmers Market Pavilion is proposed to be demolished as a part of this application. The application states that the pavilion is a circa 2006 structure to the site. Therefore, the demolition of the existing Farmers Market Pavilion is appropriate. Moving on to Building Nine and Building Ten demolition, so part of the proposal includes partial demolition of Building Nine and incorporating Building Ten, which is a standalone building on the site, to have the nonhistoric additions to be removed and to be partly enclosed into the proposed new hotel building. The footprint of the new hotel building will include demolishing approximately 50% of Building Nine and then converting the remaining portion of the building into an open-air, mostly roofless structure. The buildings numbered Nine and Building Ten are included as contributing within the National Register. A building is deemed contributing due to its significance to the site and if its absence would lead to a negative impact on the site. For a building to remain contributing, it should visually read like it did during the period of significance and retain its features and read as it did during the period of significance. As shown in the plans, removing approximately 50% of the footprint of Building Nine and removing a large part of the roof to be an open-air structure would not meet the Secretary, Secretary of Interior Standards nor the design guidelines, as it would not retain the features of the building that are considered important to the structure. For Building Ten, oh, sorry, Building Nine, let me scroll up just a little bit so we can view it. Okay. In previous meetings, it was stated that approximately 50% of the building is proposed to be demolished to accommodate the new hotel on the factory's campus. However, the submitted application indicates that all of the remaining elements of the building facade that will face Liberty Pike will utilize the existing materials or will be replaced in kind. The remaining portion of the building will be demolished. It appears that only one facade will remain on the building with wholesale replacement of the remainder. In order for a building to remain contributing, its historic features must be retained. As proposed, the building will not have a roofing system as it does today. The proposal does not meet the guidelines for demolition. Additional information is needed on the final material selection and colors. As for Building Ten, let me scroll to it. Demolition of the, of nonhistoric additions is proposed to Building Ten. The nonhistoric additions were, are appropriate to be removed as they were added circa 2015 and reviewed by the Historic Zoning Commission at the time. For the new refuse locations. Two new refuse locations are proposed on the factory campus. The design of the refuse enclosures appear to match the previously approved refuse design for materials, except for the sliding doors. The rendering appears to utilize brick and metal sliding doors. Additional information is needed for the measurements of these structures. Location one will be located alongside the proposed parking structure. Location two will be located on the right side of the rear wing of the proposed hotel building. Location one will not be visible from the right-of-way, but location two will be visible from Liberty Pike. So let me go back to the proposed hotel building within the packet. For the placement and orientation, the building is proposed to be situated at the end of the existing buildings and will partially encompass Buildings Nine and Ten into the footprint of the hotel. The placement of the building could block the view shed of the historic buildings when coming from Liberty Pike to Franklin Road. The Design Review Committee has previously given feedback in recent building, in recent meetings that the placement is appropriate to the site. As for the building form, the long extended form of the building with a pitched roof is seen on several historic buildings on the site. While the overall form of the building appears to meet the guidelines, additional details about the projection of the vertical brick pilasters is needed. In addition, the guideline referring to aligning the architectural features of a building to other historic buildings that include the floor-to-ceiling heights, cornice alignment, some window and door heights, and foundations have not been provided or have been partially provided. For the building height, the guidelines recommend making the height of new buildings consistent with the height of all historic buildings on the same block face by designing buildings to be within 10% above or below the average height of the historic buildings on the same block face. The average height of the buildings on the factory campus is 39 feet and a half inch in height. With the recommendation of the 10% height addition, the height recommended would equate to 42 feet 11 inches. The proposed height of the three-story building meets the design guidelines recommendation and is proposed to be 42 feet 7 inches. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum 13 feet ground floor height, but can be reduced in historic preservation overlay for compatibility to surrounding buildings. Additional information is needed to review the ground floor height compared to the other historic buildings on the campus. It appears that the building is proposed to be constructed out of red brick with gray mortar with black metal accents and a gray metal roof. Final material selections have not been provided as a part of the application. Additional information is needed to determine the appropriateness of the materials as it relates to the surrounding historic materials. For the details and ornamentation, on the proposed building, there are some elements that have been incorporated into the design that are seen elsewhere on the factory campus. These elements include the black metal paneling and the ribbon windows. These elements that have been incorporated help the building blend with the existing historic buildings on the site. Signage. Signs have not been included as part of the application, but the guidelines recommend to consider signage placement as a part of the overall building design. For entrances and windows, within the application is a window study with some of the measurements of the existing windows compared to the proposed windows on the new hotel. While some of the windows on the new building are smaller than the existing building's windows, other windows on the new building exceed what is, exceed what is on the historic buildings, such as the ribbon windows on the new building are larger than the historic ribbon windows. Additionally, the cube portion of the hotel does not relate to any window opening existing on the factory campus, but does relate to the X-shaped cabling seen on the campus. Window and door samples have not been provided as a part of this application. As for awning and canopies, there are several awnings and canopies that are proposed on the hotel building. Within the application, they are noted as a marquee. The most prominent canopy is on the south and east elevations which will face Liberty Pike. The canopy material is noted to be roofing material to match the appearance of the existing. A material sample has not been provided for the canopy or the brackets. On the north elevation facing the Harpeth Industrial Court, a smaller metal canopy is seen. Additional information is needed on the material selections of the canopies and their brackets. For the mechanical equipment, the mechanical equipment in two locations are proposed to be four feet taller than the parapet. Per the design guidelines and the zoning ordinance, rooftop equipment must be screened from street view. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the demolition of the Farmers Market Pavilion and the demolition of the circa 2015 addition to Building Ten with conditions. Staff, staff also recommends deferral of the, on the demolition of Building Nine, the new refuse locations, and the new hotel based on the following grounds. Overall material selections, measurements of the refuse areas, aligning the architectural features of the new building with those of nearby historic buildings, including floor-to-ceiling heights, cornice alignment, window and door heights, and foundation, and final window and door selections. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Mr. Smithers?
Okay. Good afternoon.
Give us your name for the, just for the audio record, please.
Reed Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Tally.
Yep. I appreciate it. We've, we've been coming to DRCs pretty regularly since January, had a lot of really good conversation, and I think we've made a lot of progress. It seems a lot of our topics have been very fruitful. Feel like the application reflects all of that to date. There's a handful of items that were touched on. We feel conditional approval is probably appropriate. Let us get into construction documents and start to pull stuff together and, and submit that at the appropriate time. Some of the items I can touch on, Building Nine, not, not quite sure what to, what to talk about on that one. We feel we've covered that pretty succinctly in the past several months. It's, it's lost its structural integrity, as illustrated in architectural and structural report, engineer reports. Our proposal is to keep the, the first bay, keep the materials if possible. If, if during the course of construction, that's not appropriate because of deterioration and rot or anything, then we're proposing to replace that with light-kind materials according to Shippow's recommendations. So, yeah, I mean, for that one, we feel like we've, we've touched on that pretty, pretty, pretty clearly. For the hotel, the materials, we're, our intention is to match the factory as closely as possible, from the brick to the mortar to the roof, windows and doors. We're, we're trying to get the colors, everything to, to match. The contemporary architectural metal is the same metal that we've used on the factory so far on Building Two and the Carousel Building, it had been previously approved in COA, and so we're not trying to change that. We would like to be able to, to get into the construction documents, into the spec phase, and, and start to bring more fully vetted material samples to staff with the intention of matching existing. Doing it right now, I feel like we're a little premature before we have vendors in, in Brick Yard and everybody sort of working with us. So, let's see. The windows and doors, our intention there is for historic replica with narrow mutton profiles, similar to how we did on Building Two, where we had approved and installed a mock-up window. Similarly, we'll provide samples of anything different than what was previously approved once we start to get into the detailing of those windows. The contemporary windows aren't going to clearly have something onsite right now, but we'll bring those for, for approval as well. Ceiling height is not something that we've touched on in the past. We feel like the, the window studies indirectly cover that. There really are no, no standardized ceiling heights in the factory as it, as it stands today, but we do feel we made a really honest attempt at, at, at making sure that the window elevations lined up with sizes, heights, and you can see that in the, in the, in the front facade of the hotel, which very closely resembles the front of the factory. A 13-foot height ceiling right there is probably higher than we can achieve. We have a very set height to the hotel that we've all touched on, and so we're a little bit squeezed from height and matching the windows that we have currently, and to push that higher to reach 13 feet will push both of those issues out of sync with what we've been trying to achieve the past five months. As far as the absolute height for the, the hotel, as you, our, our building height so far, it, the, the roof is, is going from front to back, north to south, at a, at a, at a set height, but the elevation steps up four feet over that same period. And so you have the, the lowest elevations at the front, where we have our public space, towards the back, where you have it four foot higher, compresses the back of the building because of the height, and that's where we have our private spaces. So we have, so our back of house, we have offices, we have guest rooms, and places that are more appropriate for a, a lower ceiling height. We'll also have exposed ceilings in the front lobby. That would help correlate that with the existing buildings and make it feel higher than it really is. Will probably be about 12 feet, I believe, in the lobby. HVAC equipment, touched on this quite a bit. As we have currently shown, it's conservatively sized. As we get through, you know, construction documents, that exact piece of equipment will have firmed up. Right now, we're showing it pretty conservative. Right now, we, we think that this is the right approach. We, we have confirmed that manufacturer can paint this equipment to match our parapet in the factory, and it's sort of self-shielding, right? So it's, it's, it's a smooth metal, it's not coils, and it's not something that's really going to look obviously mechanical. In order to provide screening for this equipment, it's going to have offsets for clearance requirements on mechanical equipment, and it's going to pop up and be more visible than the units themselves. The curb for this equipment will have built-in opportunity to add screening later if what we're saying isn't true and if it doesn't look good. And so what we're proposing is to, is to move forward as shown, on the condition that, that it looks approvable once it's installed. If it, if it doesn't, then we, then we'll add the screening and it's built in for that capability, but at least we're then working towards the best-case scenario. The hotel refuse enclosures, not quite sure what, what, what the dimensions are going to add that we haven't already. We'll have about two car bays for these. They're, the, the only one that's visible from the street potentially is, is The only one that's visible from the street potentially is next to the hotel. It's pushed as far back as we can from Liberty while opening the dumpster to the north away from the primary views. And again, our intention there is to match materials, match the factory as much as possible, and so the same sort of, the same material quest there exists, where we'd like to bring the materials for approval at a later point in time.
I believe that's all that I have. It's good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Tally. If you'll have a seat. I have one comment card for Mr. James Blair. This is item nine. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I know, James Blair, Nashville, Tennessee. I know I've spoken to you all several times and kind of my support for this project and the history and my connection with the factory, being the great-grandson of an owner of the Dorch Stove Works at one time. So this building and the construction of this new hotel is very dear to my heart, and I rise in support of the construction in the new hotel, and I think it has thankfully come before this body and through many designs and gotten better and better each time that it has come through. I feel that, I know in regards to Building 9 and certainly Building 10, that demolition is never something that should always be considered as a last resort, and I think that for certainly Building 9, it has lost its physical integrity, and I'm thankful for what is being preserved and incorporated within the new hotel design within the pool area, I think is a good balance with that, and especially taking off the more nonhistoric elements of the shed as well as the connections with Building 10. So overall, I am in support of this project. I think it's gotten better and better each time, and I hope that this item is able to pass tonight and continue to go forward. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Anyone else like to make any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Let's do, let's use staff's kind of breakup here. So they've got the Farmers Market Pavilion and the 2015 addition to Building 10. They have recommended approval for that, so let's entertain a motion for the Farmers Market Pavilion and the 2015 addition to Building 10 to start, and then we'll get to the other pieces.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Mary? And that's for approval with staff recommendations for demolition of Farmers Market Pavilion and the 2015 addition to Building 10. Is that correct? Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Michael, thank you. Any discussion specific to those two demolition applications? Okay. Let's vote on that. All those in favor of approval for the demolition of the Farmers Market Pavilion and the demolition of the circa 2015 addition to Building 10 with staff conditions, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have that. So those two items, or two portions, are taken care of. Okay, and then staff recommends deferral of demolition of Building 9, refuse locations, and new hotel. Let's hear, let's do the refuse locations by themselves, because I think it feels separated from Building 9 and the hotel a little bit, so let's talk about refuse locations. I would entertain a motion for those as well. Just new refuse locations. Now, it's not just the locations, it's the actual refuse enclosures themselves. It's recommended for deferral, and that was based on missing some, just kind of overall dimensions of what, how big are they and what are they made of?
Exactly.
Okay. It's a lot to sift through. I hear a lot of trying to find it on the page.
If it helps, it's in its own packet.
Okay. Okay. I see that now. Any motion from anybody?
I move to approve the locations and any of the materials that are suggested in the packet. I see wood and metal that's already, it's like it's already on the factory, am I right? Or brick? Can I do that? Did I do that right?
So the material of the doors are metal, so on the screen, the right-hand side is just showing you how it is a sliding gate. The material of the doors will be metal, but there is, you know...
A sliding or swinging option.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So state that again for me. Ollie?
I move to approve as shown, location-wise, in the material. I'd love to hear other people's opinions about that, but I think the locations are good.
Okay. So your motion is to approve as shown with the materials as shown in the packet. Okay. Is there a second to that?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Lisa? Okay, let's have some discussion.
So the discussion that I would like to hear more about is why the sliding gate versus the swinging. My understanding is what we've already approved has a swinging gate, and they are metal, so why in this instance is sliding?
Okay. Does the applicant have any thoughts on that? Real quickly.
Yeah, for operational functionality, the sliding, what we've found is that the swinging can be a little bit trickier with trucks coming in, and they can potentially get hung up on them. The option to slide gets it out of that zone, so we wanted the option to do either-or, but we're leaning towards sliding.
Okay. Thank you. No thoughts? Brian on that one?
Mr. Chair, I think staff recommended deferral, so we need a reason from...
Yeah, I think, I think, did you have a reason for going against staff's recommendation for deferral?
Was the deferral just for materials or...?
No, it's for the refuse enclosure as a whole, because they didn't have dimensions or material callouts, specific material. That was what the staff recommendation said.
Are there, are there not, as far as dimensions, or is that, they just need to bring that? Is that what we're...
Basically, yeah. Yeah. But we have a motion and a second for approval as shown with these materials and this configuration. I think, what I recall from DRC is, most of the commissioners felt comfortable with placement. The size that's shown, I think it's just a logistical thing, is we don't have, like, the actual documents that go into public record have no dimensions at all on them.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say brick to match refuse. And a lot of the submission here is, well, we're going to use something we used before. Well, it still needs to go on public record. What was that? Now, so if they have a brick that they've picked out and that they've been using at the factory, it should just be a picture of it and be, say, this brick, it's from this person, and it's called this. And if it's this window, it's this manufacturer, which, yes, we've seen and we've approved before, but it needs to go on the public record.
Yeah, I would like to see the dimensions, as staff has pointed out.
Yeah. Doesn't say how big it is, exactly.
I think that's important for us to actually know that information.
Yeah.
So I would like to move to defer to the next voting meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission, which is June the 9th.
Yep. Is there a second for the deferral?
I'll second.
Okay. And this is specifically for this refuse enclosure, just to be specific. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So is there any discussion on deferral? We've heard a little bit already.
The reason I'm supporting the deferral is with some other elements being deferred, I'm not sure it's going to really slow anything down, and when you don't have dimensions and you don't have materials and staff is recommending deferral, I just feel like it's appropriate. I think, I don't feel, I think it's appropriate to defer it.
Sure. Yeah, the barometer for me on deferral is, do I have enough information to make a decision on this one? I think we're comfortable with what we've seen, it's just not enough information that I feel comfortable making a decision tonight on it, so. Any other feedback on deferral? All right, let's vote on the deferral, just specific to the refuse enclosures. All those in favor of deferral to the June 9th voting meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so that particular portion is deferred. Okay, let me get back to my guide here. Okay, so recommend deferral of demolition of Building 9 and the new hotel based on overall materials, measurement of refuse areas, alignment of architectural features, and final window and door selection. So I would take a motion for that as well.
So could you restate that?
Sure. Staff is recommending deferral of the demolition of Building 9, which is, will be the pool pavilion, and the new hotel based on the following: overall material selections, measurements of the refuse area, we already took care of, aligning architectural features in the new building with nearby structures, and then final window and door selections.
Mr. Chair, can we hear staff's recommendation on the, or reasoning for the recommendation of not being allowed to demo Building 9 again? Because I thought we had discussed that at nausea at one of our previous meetings, and all had agreed that a section could come down in the front face that faces Liberty was okay to stay or rebuilt to look like it was there. I'm a little confused at why we're seeing that piece again.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think the commission had given that feedback. For the most part, we've had some dissent there, but it's always been staff's position that demolition of Building 9 was not recommended for as long as we've been looking at it. Is that...
You're correct.
Okay.
And I think that's, it does go against the guidelines, but we had given feedback that looking at the context of the whole thing, that a number of us were comfortable with that, but it absolutely goes against the guidelines, so I think that's what staff is going to say.
So from a staff perspective, their opinion of this one isn't going to change regardless. So based on that, I'll move to approve the demolition as depicted of Building 9, based on the fact that we have agreed to that particular demolition in the past and have given that direction to the applicant.
And I'll second.
Okay.
And I would, my comment would be, I would be going against staff recommendations on this. You never want to demolish a historic building, and, you know, I guess I was in Charleston long enough to know that Mayor Riley would say if one wall was standing, we're going to save that building. But I feel like in the context of all the work being done here, it's an extraordinary project, and if you're looking at it in the larger context, if this is something that we bend the guidelines on, I think it's appropriate.
And to add to that, I'm not sure that it is, does go against the guidelines. I mean, the guidelines give us criteria, and one of those criteria is that it's lost its historic integrity. And I would, I would say with all the additions to that, basically it was a lumber shed, and it'd been enclosed over the years, post-replaced, cut in two, I mean, that undermined then the structural integrity, which is a second leg on demolition, that I think we're within the guidelines.
Well, I would never say that I will, I don't go along with that thinking. If this were somewhere else and in a different context, I might say that we're saving it no matter, but it's just not here that that's appropriate to me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I add that if the building were to be demolished, that the, one of the conditions that we had on it that is going to be like the new facade that is going to be on this, we don't have material samples for that or material called out. We just have that it is going to be replaced in kind, and it's going to be a trellis, and...
So they, I looked through that. It said it was, it says timber, it says wood, and then the front, the part that they're preserving is staying just like it is today unless there's rot, and then they'll replace the board here and there. Is that, that's what I read.
But it does have that if it is going to be replaced in kind, you know, the roof color, you know, if it is going to be replaced, if it's going to be replaced in the same color, same profile, that sort of thing, so.
Sure.
We would just like, you know, clarification if that is going to be, that it does go back exactly in kind.
Okay. Well, maybe, maybe we can offer up an amendment that just says any in-kind replacement has to come back to staff for review.
Mr. Chair...
And if they don't feel comfortable, they bring it to us.
So moved. Second.
All right, Brian and Bob. So this is an amendment to the demo of Building 9. Okay. Brian and Bob, I got to think of what I said, which I forget immediately. Any, any in-kind replacement will be returned to staff for approval. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Well, I believe our reason for that would be because we think this is a solution to the concern.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's vote on the amendment. So this is an amendment to the main motion that reads that any in-kind replacement to Building 9, the front part that's to be saved, will return to staff for approval. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now we have an original motion of the demo of Building 9 and that any in-kind replacement will return to staff for approval. Any discussion on that motion before we vote? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll be voting against.
Okay. Lisa, that's noted. Thank you. Okay, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Okay. So now we have the hotel. And this one is under the recommendation for deferral for material selection, alignment of architectural features, and final window and door selections. I would take a motion for that. I'm out of paper on this one.
I would make a motion to defer with staff comments.
Okay. So a motion to defer to the June 9th?
And the reason would be those stated by staff. This is a significant building.
Is that all right if I say to June 9th?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? To defer?
Second.
Okay, Lisa? Discussion on the deferral. Brian?
So for the first time, we saw renderings, there they are, where we see the color actually put on, and, you know, that's very nice to see. It starts to actually look like it starts to merge with the factory. You know, it's not something that is, that stands out in juxtaposition to it, and I'd like to see us come back to DRC with more of that. So we look at that, and I think it just helps us make a better decision in the long run.
And I feel, I try, try hard to... And I feel, I try, try hard to not get any citizen feedback, but I have that the community feels like this is a very large building and to err on the side of knowing all the details, because I'm very supportive of this element of the project, and I would rather err on the side of us really knowing everything we're approving.
Sure. Yeah, I agree that, again, I think this is very much so headed where I would hope it would, in alignment with the guidelines, the height, all these things that we've worked on, openings. But even the applicant alluded to, well, we've got to get some additional details after approval, and I'm not really comfortable with that arrangement. I want to know more about what it's going to be before we get there. So things like taking a picture of the brick that you're proposing.
Or bringing.
Bringing it here, even a picture of some of the windows that you put in, all those kind of things that need to be on record, need to be in here as well. And, but architecturally speaking, how it, how it looks, I'm very happy with that. I think it just needs a little additional layer of detail before I'm comfortable saying that I want to take it up for a vote.
This has been truly a process between the applicant and the architect and the commission, and I think it's enormously successful.
And I would like to see in DRC, inviting the applicants back to DRC, that we concentrate on what staff has highlighted.
Yes.
Rather than going through everything all over again, but on what's concentrated.
And I wanted to say too, with the, one of the bits of information that makes me want to defer as well is this rooftop unit thing. That needs to be honed in on. We need to know exactly, I think, based on what the applicant said, that there's kind of this conservative blob on the roof that they're hoping the unit fits within, and I'm not very comfortable with that either. It's something that needs to be decided, what it is, how big it is, and asked for whatever the ask is. If it's going to peek up over the wall, then we need to know that. And then from my understanding, we don't really have discretion to just say, well, you know, we're fine seeing it, but the zoning ordinance explicitly says no. So it has to be screened one way or the other. And so that may be more parapet for us to consider. It may be that they have to provide some screen detailing. I don't know the answer, but I wouldn't be comfortable approving it in this venue today, because there's just, it's make-believe. It's just conjecture at this point on what it actually will be. So anything else? Bob, did you have anything?
No.
Anybody?
I think you said it all.
Will they be bringing, or I just missed it, a light package for this building?
I'm not sure there's any exterior lighting in the application yet.
I haven't seen that as part of the application. It was just noted in the parking structure.
Okay.
I was just going to say that would speed things along if that came, that discussion happened.
It's an important part as well. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I just have one question from staff. So the cube portion that you referred to in your analysis, what exactly are we talking about? I just want to make sure that...
So previous, well, we can look at it right here. So in previous DRC submittals, they called out this portion, and it is seen kind of in the courtyard. So this is kind of what it looks like. And here, I'll get to a different elevation. So this is kind of that cube portion, and it's going to be mostly windows and then also a metal material as well.
So a little more information on that portion would be important at DRC.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you. All right. Let's vote on this motion to defer to June 9th. This is just specific, again, to the hotel. All those in favor of deferral to June 9th, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That application is deferred to that June 9th. Thank you all, applicants. And then, I don't know that item two returned, there was somebody...
So we have a DRC before the next meeting. I assume we'll, please, the commission will come to that.
The DRC, yeah, I think it's Monday, but they have to know tonight if you're coming.
We'll have to know tonight if you intend to...
Yeah. We're going to have to have some additional documents, I think, that have come out. Yeah, yeah, formal, yeah. It's for two minutes.
All right, so I'm going to go back to item number two, which was consideration in-kind replacement elements in roofing at 305 Public Square. We did that one? No, we didn't. That was the one that was...
So, Mr. Chair, may I ask, since that is a county project, could we, could we go ahead and discuss it without an applicant?
I'm not sure we're legally able to.
Legally, the only thing that you can do as a commission, according to your bylaws, is defer or deny the applicant if there's no one here representing an item.
Then I move to defer. Item number two to June the 9th voting meeting.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Brian and Mary. Yeah, unfortunately, they show up. Any discussion on deferral?
I would say, and I don't know what council says, I'm not sure the county even has to come, but they do come out of courtesy. Do you, do you know the law on that? Do, does the county even have to seek approval?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but if that's something that I would encourage you, just to go ahead and defer it and I can look up, we can look at it next month. That's important.
I'm pretty sure they're sovereign and don't. We've run into it in planning before, and I don't think they actually have to get...
They generally do out of courtesy.
Right. Being good neighbors.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion for deferral and a second. All those in favor of deferring this item to June 9th, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. The motion is passed. Let me get to the back of this behemoth. Staff, is there anything from you all?
Nope. We've had our announcements at the beginning.
Yeah, and just a reminder, everybody, tomorrow night, if you can be there, it's at Boma, it's at Williamson County, their county hall auditorium, or whatever you call it, County Complex Auditorium.
It's at 7:00. I believe it's, there's going to be three proclamations on the agenda. I believe we are the second one.
We're supposed to yell here, here, all at the same time, when he gets done with each section.
Only if you come up for a photo.
Mr. Chair, for just, since we are right, you know, in the preservation month mode, is it hard for staff to show the picture of the Five Points Building, but the old picture before Main Street was done? I think people just don't understand sometimes where we were. And that was so indicative of where we were. Not that one. I think that one's actually fairly attractive. This, look, yeah, no, no, go the neck, the one, that one. Do you all see what the stores looked like? And it was all the way down Main Street, except you generally had an awning that came out over the sidewalk, making it even more unattractive, with wrought iron posts that were decorative. And at one point, there was a plan floated to actually cover Main Street so it could be a mall concept. That was an urban renewal concept. But I just want you all for a moment to take, see the air conditioner hanging down. We had those all up and down the street, and the transom boarded up with some kind of paneling that looks like it was interior, but that was, that was it.
Wow.
You could buy a...
Come a long way.
You could buy a water bed, you could buy used shoes, our clothing. Thank you for indulging me.
Let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Don't all want to stay here, do you? All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.